The meeting of the Development Review Board, January 29th, to order. And at the D I B, we hear applications for land development in the town of Brattleboro, and appeals of zoning and administrative decisions. Procedurally, the Development Review Board operates on the record. Broadly, this means that we take a clear record of testimony from the applicant and any interested parties, and then issue a written decision with our findings. Applicants and members of the public should be aware that as we are on the record, this is your opportunity to comment on and provide evidence relating to an application.
Can you hear me, Nora?
Can you hear us? Catherine?
Can anyone else on Zoom hear us?
They already responded.
Oh, they already did. I didn't notice that.
We can hear you.
No, Catherine. Catherine, I think it must be at your end. She can't hear me.
Can you send her a chat, Steve?
Yeah.
It's just her and try to turn the volume up.
Yeah, can you do the chat functions to them?
Sure. There's two Catherine's, so I'll send it to Catherine.
Can you hear us now, Catherine? No?
Steven, let her know we can hear. The other people on Zoom can hear, so it's her.
Okay, then I guess I can't listen then. I don't know why. You have enough for a board anyway right now, don't you?
Yes.
Okay, well then, have a good meeting.
Thank you. Application materials and written testimony is posted to the town website as received. Hearings may be continued at the board's discretion if material important documents are received after the submission deadline. In the event our decision is appealed to the environmental court, the court will not take or consider additional testimony at its hearing, but will look at the evidence from our hearings, the regulations, and determine if the evidence supports the findings and decision of this board. Only interested persons that participate in this proceeding may appeal a decision made by the board. So I strongly encourage all of you to speak up at this hearing. As we are on the record, we are going to ask you that you affirm that your testimony will be truthful, so that the applicants and anyone wishing to speak to an application, please affirm the following. I hereby affirm that the evidence I give and the cause under consideration shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth under the pains and penalties of perjury. Please say I do.
I do.
I do.
Okay, everybody on Zoom then? Please do. Applicants require a majority vote of the full board to proceed, that is four votes out of seven. If we do not have a full board present to hear your application, then we will consider a request to continue your application to the next public meeting. After taking testimony, the board will close the public hearing and may vote on your application. The board will issue a written decision within 45 days to the close of the hearing. While we may vote on an application, it is the written decision that controls the timeline for appeal. It should be noted that the town of Brattleboro is a party with an interest in land development and applications. The town does not have a special status before this board. Documents provided to the board by the town planning department, town attorney, or other town departments will be considered in exactly the same way as information from the applicant and other interested parties. So, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 15th?
All right.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Did he say Brian? Where is Brian? Can you affirm that the... Has the meeting been properly warned?
Yes, the meeting has been properly warned.
Thank you. So, let's see. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications? All right, so I am going to appoint Keith Maxwell to sit in for Catherine since she's having some technical difficulties. And Keith?
Yes.
Appointed for tonight. And let's see, I guess we can get going. So this is the application 2025-2 Windsor Housing Trust for the Ursula Down Lake Estate. Can you tell us about the project, please?
Just a second, Nora. Do we say anything about the site visit now, or no need to?
No, thanks.
Okay, all right.
Hello and thank you, everyone. I am Peter Pajee, Director of Real Estate Development at Wyndham &amp; Windsor Housing Trust. And we're here tonight to present the redevelopment of Chalet property in West Brattleboro for preliminary subdivision, site plan, P U D, and conditional use review. I'm joined in the room by Jess Newbell, our co-developer at EverNorth, Adam Morse, our civil engineer, and we're joined on Zoom by Andrea Murray of Vermont Integrated Architects, our architect of the project. I believe Elizabeth Bridgewater, Executive Director of W W H T, is also on Zoom. As the board is aware, there is a strong need for housing in Brattleboro across all family sizes and income ranges. The Chalet property is a large property within the West Brattleboro neighborhood development area that can support a wide variety of housing types and needs, and we're happy to present a plan that will add a meaningful amount to Brattleboro's rental and homeownership housing stock. In broad strokes, we're proposing a traditional neighborhood P U D that would consist of 70 total dwelling units across 12 buildings, 11 of which would be new construction. 62 of these units would be multifamily rental apartments, and eight will be single-family homes that we plan to sell as part of Wyndham &amp; Windsor Housing Trust's shared equity program. The view of the Chalet building itself from Western Ave has been a mainstay of West Brattleboro since the 60s, and everyone we've talked to about this project has a story of a wedding, class reunion, or other event at the Chalet. Our redevelopment plan also consists of a complete renovation of that historic Chalet building, maintaining the banquet hall as community space for both this new neighborhood and potentially the wider community if there's interest. This entire plan would be built out over multiple phases of construction. We're also proposing a subdivision for the various legal structures that the property will have. These would include separate ownership entities for each of the rental phases, a homeowners association for the single-family homes, and a common interest community to maintain the roadways and infrastructure on-site, which will be privately owned. We're also working with a neighbor on a lot line realignment that would square off our property boundary and add a bit of a privacy buffer for that neighbor, and that's included in the subdivision plan. This property is currently home to the Chalet Permanent Supportive Housing Program, which was stood up as an emergency response during the early days of the pandemic. This new development would maintain that program with up to 15 apartments, and we've partnered with Groundworks Collaborative, and the development will include onsite offices, conference rooms, social areas, and appropriate security measures to support that program. We're also working closely with Southeast Vermont Transit on bringing the mover directly to the site. Discussions with them around the redevelopment are progressing, and they see the opportunity to provide three bus stops onsite adjacent to each rental building. Pedestrian traffic on South Street was a major concern of both residents and neighbors, and with the bus stop being a major destination, so we're very happy to bring that service directly on the property. During sketch plan review, the board asked us to address the following specific areas: bicycle storage, parking demand and requirements, bus access, E V charging, snow storage, trash collection, garden space and the landscaping plan, and lighting. And we'll address those throughout the presentation. So with that, I'll pass it off to Adam for review of the site plan and subdivision plan, and then we'll follow with Andrea on the building plans.
Could I please have the ability to share my screen for Adam's drawings? Thank you.
So I can, I guess, start by just kind of giving a broad overview of the subdivision plan. Once Andrea can bring that up. So this is the... Well, that's... Let's see if we can find the subdivision plan. That's the overall subdivision right there. So, the idea of the subdivision is to create a six-lot subdivision, and each parcel has its own kind of, you know, separate structures on the parcel. The larger parcel, Lot 2, will contain the 30-unit multifamily building. That'd be Lot, yeah, Lot 2, and then Lot 1 is more of a, is the kind of like right-of-way open space access for the overall P U D. And that's where the majority of the utility runs are located. There are also... Well, there's a larger lot that contains the existing Chalet structure and will also contain a second new multifamily structure. That'd be Lot 4. Lot 3 will contain a series of townhouses, sort of connected units with their own separate entrances. And Lots 5 and 6 will contain the single-family units that will be done in a... As part of the initial phase of the project. And then, as Peter mentioned, there is a boundary line adjustment included in the subdivision for the north dogleg of the existing lot. So that reduces the area of the lots slightly.
If you're looking for the dogleg, it doesn't show up on the page we're looking at, really, but I think the form of the page.
I'm looking at another one here.
Yeah, if you go to the first sheet, first survey sheet.
What are we looking at?
So the upper-left corner, there's a kind of a blow-up of that dog.
Sheet 1 of 3?
Yeah, 1 of 3, yep. The inset A. Far north end of the lot.
Yeah, I see that, I see Edward and Barbara Wright and a Peter and Anne Doran. Is it the lot that kind of wraps around them?
Yeah, exactly. So the property currently wraps around those two parcels in the back, and our proposed subdivision is squaring off our property line and selling that piece to the neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
So must there are any other questions on the subdivision? I was gonna switch over to the site plan layout and go through that.
You guys good with that?
So, I guess if you can turn to C 2.0, it's probably the best overall layout.
Can you all see this on my screen? Sorry. I'm trying to follow you along here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Yes, this is the overall master plan for the site. I believe the initial project would be the south, the far south end, the parking lot and the... Turf around the far south end and a portion of the loop road. So, I guess I'll just kind of go through the master plan. So this, this plan includes a loop road, a one-way loop road off of South Street. So you would enter on the south drive access. That's the entrance to the site, and then you could, you could complete the loop and exit out the north drive access, or you could, you know, there's several parking lots designed within the site. The far south parking lot is, you know, around 30 spaces, and that's intended for the new multifamily building. So I guess, well, you'll note that utilities are tapped off of South Street. There's existing water and sewer in South Street. So we'd be running new mains into the site to supply all the new structures. We'll be bringing in new underground power. That would also be off of South Street and then kind of branched off within the site from there to feed all the new structures. So we have discussed this layout with the fire department. We've done a series of meetings with them, and they, this is the most recent kind of layout that they've, you know, been okay with. There's been a few minor changes since our last meeting with them, but nothing really that different. So I guess, so, yeah, so the new multifamily structures on the south end, we've got the existing Chalet building, which will be renovated in a future phase. And then there's a new building north of that, which will be another multifamily structure. And the single-family units are, you know, there's, I guess there's two versions of the design of the single-family units. So those will just be kind of standalone units with a driveway access on the side for single families. There's two dumpster enclosures on the site. As Peter mentioned, we've got three bus stop locations indicated. There are three fire hydrants that the fire department requested, including a hydrant on the lower access drive, which was specifically requested by the fire department. And, yes, snow storage is indicated on the plans, which, that's probably easier to see on the larger plans where there's, you know, site notes and different notes about utilities. So C, Note C 24.
Oh, C 2.4 is what you would like me to look at?
Yeah, if you, well, yeah, if you turn to C... Let's try C 2.1, it was first. So all the, all the site notes are under the site note section. Notes, for instance, Note C 24 is snow storage. You know, we've got some indicated to the south of the existing Chalet. For example, and then there's some other locations a little further to the south. And you'll note, we've tried to create as much sidewalk connectivity as possible. There's a sort of a central courtyard area in the future phase for the existing Chalet and the Phase 2 multifamily building. That's sort of a terraced courtyard area, which is accessible with steps, and it would connect the upper drive to the lower drive with sidewalks. Yes, I guess I can, I can get into the stormwater design.
Just, I'm sorry, real quick, just to jump in on the trash collection as well. Casella did confirm that they would come in for the single-family homes for the pickup pays you for. So that's how trash would be handled for the single-family homes and then the dumpsters for the multifamily.
So there's separate trash just for the single-family homes and then the apartments?
The single-family homes will have their pickup, just like everyone else around town. And then the multifamily apartments will have, we will contract a commercial hauler for those.
Thank you.
So, on the topic of stormwater, we have a fairly complex system of catch basins and piping that collects runoff from all the hard surfaces in the buildings.
What, what drawing are we?
Well, if you want to start with C 2.1.
2.1, yep.
Yep. You'll see the catch basins noted. You know, if you look at the drainage notes, Note D 5. So that's just, that's the typical symbol for a catch basin. So those have been, you know, designed around, along the curving, the vertical curving that goes along the edge of the roadway. And there are, there are a series of yard inlets as well in the courtyard area. And that all gets funneled down into the pretreatment chamber, which is a pre-cast concrete sediment for bay. So that would settle out a lot of the solids from the roadway. And then from there, it would get discharged into a new gravel wetland system. And that will be designed to the state standards because this project requires a state operational stormwater permit, so a 390-50 permit. So we'll be following the state regulations on that.
And where's that one?
That's D 1. So it's on the east side of the lot.
Yeah, D 1, yep.
Sort of between the two existing ponds.
Right here, if you're looking at the screen.
Yeah, lower right of C 2.1.
Yeah, I see D 1.
So that, so the idea with that, locating the stormwater treatment facility there was to keep it outside of the wetland setbacks. So there's Class 2 wetlands on the site, and there's a 50-foot setback. So we're, you know, attempting to stay outside of that area. You'll note the wetland locations with the flag line type that surrounds the wetlands. And there is a good sheet, actually. I believe it's C 1.0, that's kind of an existing conditions wetland plan. If you're interested to see where those wetlands are located.
What, what drawing?
C 1.0.
These blue shaded areas are the designated wetlands that have been delineated, rather.
Yep.
The ones with the little flags outlining them.
Yeah, the line with the flag on it, that's right.
So there's quite a few wetland areas on the existing site that we had to work around. And you'll, you'll notice on the outfall for the gravel wetland pond, there is a, what's called a level spreader. And that's for, it helps to dissipate the discharge from the treated, the treated water that gets discharged from the pond and will convert it to sheet flow to alleviate any erosion.
Where's that going?
So that'd be under D 9? Note D 9.
Right here.
I can't see what.
It's above D 1. Yeah, it's directly above the pond, D 1.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
That's a D 6. Ah, D 9.
Yeah, D 9, D.
That, that spot is where the, the, the... Your pond is emptying into?
Yeah, that's a level lip spreader, and it's, you know, right on the edge of the setback, right off the setback line for the wetland setback. So that, that's intended to dissipate the discharge from the treatment pond.
Now, is that constructed?
No, none of this is constructed. This is, this is all closed. So we still, we still need to obviously get through this process and then the state permits. There is an existing pond that's there.
Yeah, a couple of them.
Yeah.
So must... I guess I'll ask a question to throw on the topic. Were other locations considered, for example, like directly north of the development?
Oh, for stormwater?
Yeah.
It's really tough because there aren't that many locations down, you know, downhill of the subdivision that would really work. So, you know, you'll note on the next sheet that the subdivision extends further south. So we really needed a centrally located treatment practice that could be, you know, that could receive runoff from gravity flow. Because that, you know, other locations wouldn't work.
For example, the parcel that we all have come under some agreement with the neighbors to give, that parcel is down slope, and it's north. Was that, was that area considered?
That wasn't considered. There are wetlands adjacent to that area. And also discharge from there would be, could be problematic because you've got other adjacent lots. And I'm, you know, I'm not really sure of the, we didn't look at it too closely, to be honest.
There is also an existing retaining wall right here. Many of you've probably seen it. It says Dalems Chalet on it when you look at it from the downhill side. And that is an historic artifact that, you know, will be restored. But that changes the way stormwater comes down off the hill. It sort of deflects it around it, so making it more challenging to put the stormwater treatment on the north end as well. And I would say, also, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, that would, if you did it...
That's your C 23?
It would force you to do more than one treatment practice if we had to do something on the north side. So that's one of, you know, one of the main reasons why we would shy away from that site.
And then, Adam, please correct me if I'm wrong. The constructed gravel wetland does have a certain amount of storage before the overflow happens. And I believe, and right now, that's the 50-year storm, and we're looking at expanding that capacity as well.
That's correct.
That's above and beyond the state requirement. We're just, because we know the 15- and 100-year storm are happening a lot more often than 15- and 100-years, looking to, looking to expand the storage capacity of the gravel wetland.
And the team has had conversations with Mr. Freshy and the school around, you know, minimizing the effect of any runoff coming down toward the school. And so that's why we're looking at ways to, you know, make this the most robust retention area possible. And, you know, the overflow comes kind of this way. Or I should say north, sorry, if you can't see my cursor.
So I guess I'll flip to the next sheet, C 2.2, which pans a little further south and shows the single-family structures, which we've already sort of talked about. Then I guess if we go to the last sheet, C 2.3, this is sort of the Phase 1 of the project, which is the new multifamily, 30-unit multifamily, 31 units. You'll note that there's a series of kind of front patio sidewalk access areas. Another feature that the fire department asked for is feature C 14, which is a pull-off for a ladder truck. So that's, it's not paved. It would be grass pavers. And so it'd be designed for fire truck loads, and so they can pull in there and set up and get access to the south side of the building. And there are a couple of structures to the west of the parking lot. There's a bike, covered bike storage, a smoking shelter. ADA, you'll note there's ADA parking within all of the parking lots. ADA, you'll note there's ADA parking within all of the parking lots. Yeah, I think that's the main kind of overview, I don't know if anyone has any follow up questions.
Okay, Ford, do you have any questions for our applicants?
Is there going to be more presentation or?
Yes, uh, so we'll, we'll get into a little bit of discussion around the building and I had some follow up on the site as well, but I'll wait for some questions to be asked.
No, no, no.
Um, so, yeah, so just looking at
So, excuse me, just let me know, um, let you guys know, um, we'll be doing the questioning first. And when they're finished and we're finished with the questioning, then we can take their testimonies, okay?
Uh, so just looking at the list of, uh, things, uh, that we were asked to address, so bicycle storage, as Adam pointed out, we will have, uh, exterior, uh, covered bike storage. Uh, and there will also be interior storage lockers, um, for folks that, that can store there, uh, over, over winter. Parking demand, so we are, uh, I think actually on the plan that was submitted in the final, we'll, we'll update, I think we were one shy. But we are going to provide one parking space per dwelling unit, per rental dwelling unit, and then the single family homes will have their, have their driveways. Uh, we are currently under that amount right now, there's about fifteen folks with, um, with cars, uh, onsite right now out of, I believe, twenty seven. But, um, we'll be providing one, one space per, for the, for the regulations. Bus access, uh, we talked about, um, EV charging is also located on the plan, I believe that's, is that C twenty two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So
C twenty two.
Note, C twenty two is EV charging, we'll also be meeting, uh, the twenty twenty four Vermont Energy Code, which requires a hundred percent of the spaces to be, uh, EV charging ready. But we'll have four, uh, or four pedestal, or two pedestals with four chargers for actual installed EV chargers. Talked about snow storage, uh, trash collection, and then Andrea's gonna cover garden, gardening, landscaping and lighting future and presentations, so. Just wanted to make sure we hit on those topics while it was relevant.
Hey, um, I can keep going if you would like, or if you have burning questions, we can address this.
Anybody have a burning?
I'm okay.
Everybody good? Go ahead, Andrea, then.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so just a few other things on the site, we were engaged to help with some of the master planning of the site and it sounds like most of you went on a site visit, so you understand there's sort of an extreme topographical situation on the site, it's very steep from South Street. It's sort of there, where we're showing building development is really the flattest area and the easiest area to develop. And so we tried to concentrate all of the development in this general area. There is a, a goal here, as Peter mentioned and Adam mentioned, to have all types of housing, to create a diverse and interesting neighborhood that has, you know, variety of scale, variety of character in the buildings, um, variety of kind of homeownership or rental. And then a bunch of different places to gather, to recreate, to contemplate, to garden, so even though you may be living in community or in a multi-family building, there should be a place for everyone to go out and, you know, plant a, a patch of lettuce or some flowers or whatever, so. There's a lot of diversity here, uh, there are walking areas. There is a high priority that the entire site, while very steep, is also accessible to those with mobility challenges. Um, I'm going to share with you the, uh, photometric plan and then the landscape plan, so I'm gonna start with the photometric plan. And hopefully you can see this. Um, this is that same diagram we were just looking at. And you should have this in your package. And really what this shows, each of, I'm gonna zoom right in here. Each of these, um, fixtures that say S A four, and then there's one that says S A three. Those are pole mounted lights. They have, there are sixteen foot poles with a two foot base, so an eighteen foot in total. And the difference between S A three and S A four is just the spread of light, so our engineer, you know, picked the appropriate fixture just to make sure we're maintaining, you know, minimum light levels for safety and navigation around the site at night, so. If you want to look at the numbers, we certainly can, but just the colors I find are really helpful. The reddish brownish color just gives you a sense that that's pretty constant all around. And then the bluish color numbers tell you that those lower light levels are starting to drop off a little bit. So this is the effect of light. This is the effect of light across the site. Um, the lights are all dark sky, full cutoff fixtures. There are a couple of fixtures that will likely be building mounted on kind of some of these buildings that have yet to be designed. Um, and they will comply in the same way. We also shared with you a bollard light in the fixture cut sheets, we have not shown any bollards on the site plan as of yet. We may end up including one or two at building entrances if necessary, but we have not put those in yet. Can I move to, I'll move to landscape and if anyone wants to stop me, please feel free.
Questions about lighting?
Yes, uh, that, right where your entrance and exit is, it looks like your lighting does in fact spill over onto the neighbor's property across the street.
Down here?
I, you don't, you don't show the, the extent of the street or the, or the property line of the neighbors on the drawing, but scale wise, it looks as if it, uh, it looks as if your lighting does go across onto your neighbor's property.
You're right, and it does look that way, and I think that could be easily remedied by moving this light fixture this, to the south on the other side of the driveway. So we would be happy to address that as a condition.
I, I'd bring notice to the neighbor to the north as well. Not just across the street, I, I noticed the same thing.
I thought that's the one you were talking about, the neighbor to the north. Oh, you're talking here across the street, I actually don't think it, this is where the, the street is way out here. This line is the right of way, so I do believe the light is simply spilling onto the street, but we will double check that for you. We, we will, um, we're happy to not spill onto the neighboring properties.
Anybody else? Okay, Andrea, you can go on to the landscaping.
Okay, I'm gonna do a, a whirlie on you here, so if you don't mind, um, we've, we've rotated the property so that we can better get everything on the page and make it easier to read and make it larger. So just I'll reorient everyone, South Street right now is here at the bottom of the page. Okay, and so where we were just talking about those light fixtures is right here. This is the, the loop road, um, so you come in this way and you come back out this way. Phase one part of the project, multi-family building is down here at the south end of the site. And then this area here is, um, future phases of work. Hopefully I didn't throw you too, too badly. In developing a landscape plan for the project, we of course looked at the zoning regulations and in particular the requirements for trees and on parking areas and, um, drive areas as well as plantings in front of residential or dwelling units. We specifically thought about plantings for screening and privacy, for shade, for wildlife habitat, for buffers against wind to create private spaces and of course beauty. We considered use of, I mean, almost all the planting specified are native species that require less maintenance, have adapted to this climate and attract native species, pollinators, uh, birds, et cetera. We have a real, would like to include quite a variety of plant types that are, you know, some of them are fast growing to try and meet immediate needs for shade and screening and some are slower for longevity and, and kind of deeper, um, deeper shade. There are both evergreen and deciduous plantings and there's a variety of heights and widths and in different locations for different purposes and to create different characters across the site. Yeah, and as well for seasonal interest. So, um, I'll just kind of walk you, oh, I'll also note that these trees that are shown in white are some significant trees that exist on the site already that we are going to work really hard to save. Otherwise, this sort of green line here, and there's actually, there should be one down here. But this is really pretty heavily planted all along here. So just, um, just, just so folks know. So you would come in and, you know, there'd be some sort of trees here and here. One of the things that we really wanted to try to do with this site is not have, right now you kind of approach the site and there's this really wide curb cut and you can kind of careen on in and go at a, at a rarely, fairly quick pace, so we wanted to slow that down a little bit, and I think this, the in and the out, one way in and out will help with that. As well as having a series of plants and walking paths along the driveway that just kind of helps slow things down and make it more character of a neighborhood. So we have, um, some shrubs here, some trees along the way, these are the terraces that Adam spoke about. This is the existing chalet building and we're proposing maintaining and restoring the chalet, the banquet hall, the banquet hall hall itself, but the, um, removing the motel wing, which is really not in the best shape. And in, what we're trying to do here is create a terrace area so that the townhomes and pedestrians have a really nice view down the hill and create places for, uh, contemplation, for people to gather, terraces for residents to cultivate if they would like. Um, as you move along the road, you can see a series of seat, street trees. And, um, they continue kind of here and around. Some trees and then some additional shrubs and perennials in these areas buffering, in this case, the dumpster area. And then, um, as you head out here, there are some buffers here along this curve in the drive to provide some protection to the neighbors. A buffer for the neighbors. The, down here, this is phase one, so this is the new multi-family building. And we're proposing, um, you know, some trees along this side of the parking area. This is the smoking shelter and this is the covered bike area. Here are the dumpsters for this end of the site. And then as you enter the building here, there are some shrubs along the front of the building here, there's some outdoor seating, some additional shrubs and some raised beds. Some of the people who will move from the chalet into this building have some mobility challenges and, uh, so we, we think that we would like eventually, if we can afford to, to put some raised beds here so that folks living here have the opportunity to grow some things as well. We have another area here for future gardening for community members. And, you know, there's the potential also to do that here as well as, uh, down here near this other new proposed building. The building itself here is a three story building from this side of the building. And, uh, so three stories above the grade plane, but there is a small area down here as you're heading down the hill that provides access to a basement, basement for maintenance and storage purposes. There is on your landscape plan, these, all these different plantings or suggested plantings are labeled and there's a schedule here with their common names, their Latin names, kind of their mature height and width and some descriptions of those plantings. I should say the other thing that these plantings help with is bank stabilization, so there's some regrading in particular in this area that's occurring. And these plantings help with erosion and help to slow down the water as it's coming off the hill and headed toward the new gravel wetland. I know I, I know I went really fast, are there any questions on the landscape plan?
Anybody? Okay, go ahead, Andrea.
Okay, I'm going to move on really quickly to the building, um, floor plan, I'm just going to share, you should have the plans in your packet. But I just thought I'd real quickly share the main floor of the new, uh, phase one multi-family building. Just so folks can understand, um, just a couple of quick numbers, the footprint of the building is about eighty six, between eighty six and eighty seven hundred square feet, so it's not a huge footprint. Uh, the total area of the building is twenty seven thousand square feet, so it's three floors above this, or it's this floor and two floors above that, and then some basement space as we mentioned for storage, maintenance and utilities. The unit sizes vary, there are studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and some three bedrooms. And the main entrance would be right here off the parking lot, you come into a vestibule. You can see all the way through the building out and down the hill, making sure you have a connection to the landscape. And you can see that the building is kind of two volumes that are shifted. And that's intentional to try and break down the massing of the building and make it fit more with the scale and proportion of the main chalet building. There is, there are offices, as Peter mentioned, for groundwork right here at the front, so they can watch um, and be available to people coming and going as well as a community room. The building is fully accessible, um, by an elevator that will go all floors. And will also have, um, specifically accessible units. I'm gonna show you some pretty pictures, hopefully you think they're pretty. This is the building as you're approaching on the one-way drive, so if you went straight ahead where my cursor is, that's the parking area. And this is the entrance into the building here. And then if you wanted to drive around the loop, the loop road, you come down here and this is that access into the lower level for storage and maintenance. So you can see again the two sort of shifted volumes helping the building not look like one large building, but more like two smaller buildings that are connected. Show you a couple of other views, this is a similar view, just a bit, uh, further away. This is the view from the uphill side, so from the parking lot, here's another view of the entrance. You kind of see except for this little tree branch here, but, you know, sort of a transparent connector between the buildings. And then, uh, yeah, so these are kind of the, the main views that we shared in our package, um, we're still developing this considering materials and the like. Building, oh, go ahead.
She thinks we did.
The building is
I, I just, I just wanted to add that, uh, I think you, I heard you say that you included those in the packet, but we didn't receive those. I, I just, I just wanted to add that, uh, I think you, I heard you say that you included those in the packet, but we didn't receive those. Just as an FYI.
Um, they came in the second package of stuff, Brian, that we sent to you.
Well, we did get all the schematics and everything, and that's the more detailed things, which seem at least to me more important to have, be able to review in advance. I'm, I'm personally fine just seeing the, the, the visuals, you know, the photos, so to speak now, but just, just so you know, I, we didn't get those.
I thought I had circulated those time, but I, I can check back.
Well, you're getting to see them now, I hope that's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
It, it is for me, it's.
Did you blow up again on the bottom right-hand corner one?
The bottom right, this one. Yeah, so that's the, the front elevation, I would call it the front elevation from the parking area. You can see, you know, we're trying to create a porch-like feel coming into the building. Um, breaking, you know, making this scale a little more human scale here. And, and then you come into the build and, and with some windows for, you know, security visibility. Um, in both directions, right, watching people coming into the building. Uh, but also to welcome people, you know, the lights on, you see someone there, the way of hello kind of thing. Um, the building is fully sprinkled, um, protected throughout with a fire suppression system. The building is, uh, a very sustainable building. The envelope is a high-performance envelope, by envelope I mean the walls, the roof. The foundation are all really well insulated and air sealed. There will be energy recovery or heat recovery ventilation in the building. Um, because it will have such a, we'd say, tight envelope. And there will be no use of fossil fuel in this building. It will be a one hundred percent electric building, uh, with, we think heat pumps. I'm not sure which type of heat pump yet, but with heat pumps, technology for heating and cooling. As well as, um, perhaps some electric resistance backup. And, uh, likely heat pump technology also for domestic hot water. Um, the building has a potential for solar, uh, photovoltaic solar electric generation on the roof. And we will try to do that also for other buildings on the site as well. To make, uh, to try and generate as much power as we can for the project. Um, some other sustainability features, there will be water conserving light, uh, sorry, water conserving plumbing fixtures. Uh, LED light fixtures to, um, minimize electricity use. And, um, hopefully the use of as many local materials and local tradespeople as possible. To, you know, minimize transportation and carbon impact of bringing materials to the site. But also to keep dollars in the local community. We have not decided one hundred percent, but we're exploring perhaps even using some locally milled hemlock. On the exterior of the building, so kind of excited about that.
So that I understand it, are the floor plan for the. Uh, second and third floor are, are the same as the first or, or?
Sure, they're very, so this is the first floor and the second floor looks like this. So it's similar, it's the same in terms of the building units and the layout of the units. But the groundwork space and the community room are only one level, um, single story parts of the building. So it actually is a fairly slim, uh, long skinny building. And that's largely has to do with the topography and the way it fits on the site. And the, the way we can construct it in an affordable way. Um, you know, everything kind of aligns in this direction. Uh, and in this direction, it's a very, it's a systems building, I guess I would say. If that makes sense. We have some, you know, of those sort of flat-on elevations, which are never quite as fun. As the three D images.
Okay, so the board, please talk for questions.
I have a question, is this a wood frame building or?
Yes, this would be, there would be concrete in the foundation, but this will be a wood-framed structure. Uh, type five B construction.
Um, I have a question about parking, the, so you have a slot per unit for this building. But you have no parking additionally for the staff?
So we have, yeah, one parking space per dwelling unit. With the parking demand onsite now, that thirty-one parking spaces, we, we feel comfortable with the thirty-one for both residents and staff.
And then about the parking, there's the consecutive. Eleven spaces.
It's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah, the way it looks right now.
Okay.
Don't know where you're gonna put one more, but I, I think it'll be all right.
Right.
Well.
I mean, I counted it.
Uh, I have a question about the. Is there a shared service agreement between the, the lots since you're sharing that road?
That's what the common interest community is, everyone's a member of that common interest community and there's, uh, you know, maintenance.
On parking, on phase one, on the far side, out by the, uh. Uh, out by the smoking shed, I see you have a, a, an island in there. Um, but on the, uh, on the side closer to the building, it looks like you've got sixteen in a row.
Cause the, in the, we have a handicap in the middle.
Yeah, I think the goal here is that, um, someone coming out of the building could come along the walkway. There's a, um, depressed curb here so that for mobility purposes, both for handicap parking. But also for pedestrians who are looking to cross the parking lot. Come over to this island where they're received, um, by another sidewalk. That takes them either to the smoking shelter or to get their bikes. Um, we're hoping having the bike shed near the smoking shelter will encourage more people to bike and fewer people to smoke.
But we.
Are you aware that we have a, like a, a, a.
Requirement.
Ten, ten, ten in a row, uh, maximum parking lot.
I see, I think what we were trying to do is to break it up with, we can't have an island here because, um. Of, for handicapped access, but we, I think, thought that this actually broke up the ten. I don't know if that's.
Is it?
Acceptable as a pause.
Is it possible to, I mean, you know, one of the. At some point in time, we've, we've, uh, we've allowed things where they'll have. Uh, you know, additional, uh, shade trees that, uh, that break it up a little bit. So that it's not like you just have this big, long row of cars.
Yeah, here, let me go back to the site plan, so, or to the landscape plan, um, and just warning you, it's gonna flip its orientation again. Um, but we, we did try to put, um, a nice group of shade trees here. As well as, um, some shrubs in here, there's a nice big tree here, here, and some trees here and here. I know that doesn't break up this mass entirely, but.
Yeah, the, the one I'm concerned, the one on the, the one on the far side, uh, that meets the, meets our code. It's, it's the one that's closest to the building.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that has sixteen in a row.
Not the trees, the parking spaces.
Oh, I see, yeah, well, I guess we, it was, we interpreted the code. I guess we thought that this, you know, landing spot, which we're considering part of a walkway. To be the pause of the sixteen in a row. So I guess that's open to interpretation, cause that's not clarified in the zoning.
It's actually wider than what is required for ADA, it's.
I mean, we, we generally look for islands.
Gotcha.
It's, it's actually wider than what ADA requires, five feet, and this is a full, the same width as a parking spot. So, um, we did try to make it wider so that it would create that pause. But we could look at ways to add an island if that is preferred. It's really tight on the site in terms of parking, but we could potentially add one down here and, and put an island in here somewhere. It makes it challenging for, um, plowing as well.
Yeah, I, I think we could, we could probably fit an island.
Yeah.
Um, going one step further on the parking, we, uh, talking about, uh. Renovating the banquet hall. Where, if, if ever you had, uh. Uh, people coming to the banquet hall, where might they come, where might they find a place to park?
Um, that's a great question, I think the first thing to say is renovating the banquet hall doesn't mean renovating it necessarily for banquets. So I think it would be a community space primarily used by people who live here already. So the presumption is they would already have a parking spot. But should guests come for some event here? There's parking along the street here and there's also parking down here. We imagine an access into this building with a small addition. That has a stair and a lift that brings you up to the, and I'm gonna put it in quotation marks, banquet hall area. Um, so I really think that some of the banquet hall area also may be con- converted to some dwelling units. Um, and so the, the banquet hall area will be a lot smaller. We're just calling it the banquet hall because that's what community members have called it, so we understood.
Yeah, just to clarify, our intention is not to rent that out as a commercial operation. Uh, it would be really mainly for residents, uh, onsite for larger gatherings or, or meetings or things like that. Um, so it, it wouldn't be in, in a commercial operation like it was today.
And again, I think it's worth mentioning that current property is about fifty percent, you know, fifty percent of. Unit residents have cars, um, so it's not gonna be the identical population on this, on this fully built-out property, of course. But I'd say statewide and within, uh, you know, the brado bar region. Lower and moderate income households do not have a hundred percent car ownership, um, that's fifty to two-thirds, kind of depending on where they are. So I think a one-to-one allows for staff parking, visitor parking.
I mean, one of the reasons.
I was just gonna say, and there are two car, uh, driveways.
Yes, yep.
And Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust, and, you know, we've all had discussions with the mover. Trying really hard to get public transportation here, it's a priority because so many of the residents don't have. Cars or can't drive because they have limited mobility.
I think I only, I only have one more question. Is, um, in, on your floor plan, uh, of the first floor. You showed the, uh, you showed the offices, uh, there on, uh, page A two point two. And you had mentioned something about, uh. Windows and such for, uh, that would, uh, add to, uh, the whole, uh, security idea. Um, is, uh, is it your intent to have, uh, the, the people. In that room, i- is that going to be a glass front that, so that people are gonna be able to. Watch the, the, the people that come and goes through the entrance or?
Yeah, so it's hard to see on this drawing here, I'm gonna mo- zoom way, way in. But there is a, a window here in the vestibule area. So that there can be a greeter here and some visible connection. There's also the potential for windows here, looking this way, so you can see people coming around the loop road. But also into the parking area. And then there's glass along these, so you would be able to see through the meeting room and out this way as well. So it's not all glass, but there, we've, we are hoping we can put enough windows in there. So that there is clear visibility, I would say, you know, almost a hundred and eighty degrees of visibility.
And what, just out of curiosity, what is it that's, that one dash one that's in the corner?
That's for one-on-one meetings.
Oh, okay.
Or consultations.
Another meeting room, okay.
Yeah, it's just a, a small little private space, you know, if someone comes with an issue.
I couldn't figure it out.
Sorry. Good question.
I have a question about the, uh, the drive, presumably that's asphalt.
Yes.
And does it have a burn to, to channel the water?
It'll be, that's all.
Well, so there's a vertical curb, um. In most locations, um, in a couple of locations, there is a, so on the upper drive adjacent to the one unit. Um, buildings, there, there's a gravel shoulder. So that would, so, uh, stormwater would run off that. And then into the yard inlets, and then on the, um, lower access road. Where the, kind of south of the dumpster area, there's another similar setup like that with a.
The water won't end up undercutting the pavement.
Right, yeah, it'll go onto the gravel shoulder and then go into these swales and.
And is the road construction part of phase one?
The, the road, the upper road construction is part of phase one, the, they want, the fire department wanted us to complete the loop road, uh. For, as part of phase one, so they could come in and do the, do the full loop. Um, they said they were comfortable as part of phase one for that, uh, loop road being gravel. Uh, with it being fully paved in, uh, phase two. Um, depending on a few things, we might try and do the whole thing, uh, depending on some funding, which is, um. You know, the news, it's, it's, you know, um, we might try and do the whole thing all at once. But certainly, uh, at, in the first phase, the upper road would be paved and that, that lower road would be constructed.
And do you think, uh, the, it's a one-way road for phase, for, for the whole phase? Or do you think maybe for phase one, it might, you might need to be coming up both directions on this?
Yeah, so at the end of the day, it's gonna be, yeah, the one-way move. During phase one, um, we might have to have, uh, two-way on the, on the upper, uh, a- access, uh, road. And it is, uh, I believe it's twenty feet wide, um, so, you know, it'll be a, it'll be a tight road, but, um, it, it will be able to do that.
And I think the, they're, like, the construction will be tight when you do phase two. And you have an act, you have an active road here.
Yep.
And you have limited area for staging, especially for this building that's close to the, to the south side of the property. That's kind of into the hill.
Yep, you know, so we, we work with the construction manager through the design process and that, you know, construction station will be part of their, part of their role in figuring that out. You know, we've certainly done, uh, tighter sites than this and it's, it, um, it's just, you know, gets worked into the contractor's, uh, general conditions.
So, um, kind of a different, uh, question, if you guys are done with the parking. So you have these single-family homes and in this pod of other kinds of properties. Um, can you explain about the ownership of the land underneath of that? And the maintenance of the internal, like, roads and parking lots and how that is, cost of that is shared? With the single-family homes and the townhomes and all that?
So, uh, the property, as we said, will have, uh, what's called a common interest community. Uh, which all of the different ownership entities will pay into, uh, on a. We need, that's one of the legal details that will be figured out, but it's either on a, you know, a per-unit basis or a per-square-foot basis, something like that. we need, that's one of the legal details that will be figured out, but it's either on a, you know, a per-unit basis or a per-square foot basis, something like that, um. And as part of that common interest community, there will be one maintenance, uh, entity, which will be, when everyone's or has a trust, um, that will manage all of the contracts, and then each ownership entity pays in on that kind of pro-rated basis, uh, to, to manage that.
So those single-family homes, they own the home, but the land underneath the
They will own the home, uh, correct, and then the land underneath, uh, will be part of the, uh, homeowners association, uh, that will have, um, and the, the reason why that works, it's kind of a, it's a legal mechanism for the shared equity program to keep that property perpetually forward.
Okay. Do you envision having like a homeowners, or association of the people that live there to kind of own this?
You mean like a, ten, a tenant council kind of thing, property-wise?
Yeah.
We have those on other properties, absolutely, um, I think especially, uh, you know, might, yeah, I, I, we don't know how that will play out right now, but we certainly have those on other properties, I think including the existing chalet, so, yeah.
So, I just still, the, the private homes, there's what, eight of them, I guess?
Eight, yep.
Those would be, they wouldn't have a separate homeowners association?
They would, yes.
And would they be paying separately into the maintenance and plowing of their driveways and stuff like that? Or would that be part of the whole system?
Their driveway, so like, you mean the driveways for the individual home itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's privately owned, that's on them to maintain, that's on the individual homeowner to maintain.
So they would be responsible for their individual
For their individual drivers, correct.
But not the, so
But not the main loop road.
But, so there would not be an additional homeowners association payment to them over and above what everybody in the place would get?
Um
So, yeah, there, so there's gonna be a homeowners association of those eight units, the eight units, I think, they will pay most of their costs on their own, there'll probably be some show, there's the potential that they could share
Yeah, there might be some shared, minor shared costs, I'm not, like yard maintenance.
Just for that small HOA, and then that HOA will be a member along with rental phase one and rental phase two. So there'll be a three-member common interest community. Then each of those entities will pay dues, that helps proportionally maintain all the common elements. Uh, we were intentional about the rental communities having the majority of the land, so that the homeowners weren't overburdened by, you know, lawn mowing, essentially, um, and to try to keep that affordability for the owners lower, because that'll be a, you know, mindful of the shared equity.
Any other questions, Chris? No?
Go ahead.
Question I have is maybe not actually for the applicants, um, for the chairperson, staff, maybe the applicants. Um, will we see future phases at these meetings?
Of, of course.
And, okay, what, and in what capacity, or like, what sort of approval will that be?
I don't know, yeah.
Do, do you know?
Brian, question.
Will those be conditional use as well, or site plan, or?
So you folks are already doing the conditional use for, for the multifamily housing, so that part of it is done, and uh, I think it's for you to determine what you want to do as far as reviewing the final design of the future phases. Um, basically, you're, you're approving the number of units there are gonna be, the general massing, all that's really gonna be left is the final design of those different buildings. So if you want it, you could ask them to come back, back and present it and just to show that it conforms to the standards and to see it in public, or you could do a condition that the staff would do a review to show that the buildings conform to the building standards. Um, but as far as site plan goes, as far as conditional use, and as far as the subdivision PUD approvals, all those would be in place, so there would be, really, the only thing that could be appealable at that point would be, um, whether in fact a proper determination was made by me that they conform to the, to the design standards.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, now it's your turn. So we're gonna ask you to come up one at a time, state your name, and tell us, uh, what your concerns or issues or questions or any of that. So, um, I'm gonna say there won't be any back and forth between you and the applicants, you'll address your questions to us. We'll take down some notes, when you're all finished, then we can talk about it again. Okay? Please.
Hi, I'm Corey Frazee, I'm a civil engineer and I'm working with the school, academy school in the school district. I just wanted to make sure that you received our letter, letter from Robert Clark and Kelly Diaz. And I guess a clarifying question based on what you just said, our understanding is there will be another hearing in two months, so there will be an opportunity for us to work with the applicant on some of our questions around drainage and stormwater.
So for us, for this, uh, subdivision, from our understanding, this is preliminary and there would be a final hearing. And that, that final hearing would be, uh, you wouldn't be ready for the February meeting, so you would apply for the March meeting.
Okay.
Sorry to give that out of order, I realize, as I was saying, okay.
That's good, thank you.
Joey, thank you, Corey. Anybody else?
Good evening, Robert Van Dyke, I'm a neighbor on South Street. Um, I have a few questions, um, I'm really concerned about the walkability of this place and people being able to come up off of Western Ave and access it on foot or on bike. And I don't think that just having the mover, um, have a, have a few stops at the chalet is adequate. Um, and, and I became even more concerned when, um, it seems like the, the property to the north is, that the, the dogleg, as I heard it called, is getting, um, transferred to the neighboring property. Because that, that then doesn't allow any possibility for a sidewalk to meander behind those houses.
Go ahead.
And I'm also wondering, uh, what's happening with Ursula, uh, Danlon during this process, and where is she going to live? Thank you.
Anybody else? This is your chance, you know, speak now, we will convert.
Um, just so that you know, Ursula, Ursula is on the map here somewhere.
No, she's not. Mistress. Ursula's there.
Oh, oh.
Miss, mistress on.
Oh, okay.
Hold on, can you hear me? I'm on, I'm online on Zoom.
Go, go ahead.
I raised my hand, but, uh, nobody
Well, I usually go in the room and then I go, I go to Zoom.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Emily.
Uh, hi, my name's Jim Kirby, I guess I, you, you have a phone? I, I live on Thayer Ridge Road, and a couple of things, I'm glad you're gonna do some development with the property. However, like, uh, the other person who spoke, I'm pretty concerned about the pedestrian access. I think if you look at the site, um, they have a access to the north on the, on the entrance, and they have a sidewalk on the south, wait, no, the other way, south and north. So they have sidewalks on the entrance and the exit. The space in between, they don't even bother to put a sidewalk there, which is within that property, and they certainly could have done that.
You mean between the two entrances?
Yeah, and it just indicates the level of concern that they have for pedestrian access on South Street. South Street is a two-lane road, however, it has all these dogs. It has very poor drainage, in the wintertime, it's completely filled with ice a lot of the time. So basically, it's not a safe place for people to walk in. So, um, I think when I looked at the plan today, I thought that it could be improved by taking the three-unit building, which is the closest, and instead of putting it where it is, put it to the north of the exit road. And make it so that it has an elevator, so that, so people could have access to a trail that would go down to Academy Skill, School, and to Western Ave. It is, I think it's very important that there is an access, there is an additional access. I raised this at the plan at one of the informational meetings, and I don't see, there's been any attempt to try and do that. The other thing I just think is also important is that there's gonna be kids on these sites. So whether this is planned or not, there's gonna eventually be a trail from this development to Academy School. I mean, that's the way, you know, that's the way things happen, you know, if the, if people don't plan for it, then, then the people who are the residents who live there, they will change it. Um, what else do I have to say? I, I think also, it's just been really hard to see the people struggling to come up and down the street in bad weather or even in good weather. There have been times when I've come across people who were in distress on the street, and I've had to stop and help them in some ways. So I just think that, that any degree that you could do to make it easier to get down to Western Avenue, um, and, and certainly an elevator would probably take half the drop out of the, out of the, out of the range between Western Avenue and, and the development, and I think that would be a, a, a good position to go. And with that, I'll sit down, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jane Diefenbach, I'm a neighbor on South Street and roughly across from the wetland part of the property. Um, we didn't plan this, but we're all in alignment. We, it, it seems a shame not to, um, not to come up with a better solution for pedestrians. Um, in reviewing the, the agenda and the attachments, I noticed the justification for dense density in this property because of the neighborhood development area that it's just become a part of. And if I'm not mistaken, a big goal of that system is to, is to try to encourage walkability. And I just feel like if, if you punt on this one, then everyone down the line on Western Avenue is gonna ask you to punt on theirs. Yet we have a, we have a chance to see kids spilling down the hill to go to Academy School, and to see people shopping in the commercial area that's just a block away, um, going to church, um, go, going to the, the, effectively the town green, I mean, this is a, this is a, such a, a beautiful property, I think the plan does it justice, um, and that's just a, a piece of it that I think we need to be more forward-looking on. Um, but, but I'm here generally in, very much in support of the project, I think. Um, we couldn't ask for a more ethical developer than Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust, and I'm, I'm pretty, pretty ver- very pleased with the plans, I just would ask for that. Some really good thinking and creative work to see what else can be done to get that access to Western Ave. Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Phil Warner, I'm a psychotherapist in Brattleboro, and what brings me here and what makes us really in support of this project is our real heartfelt concern about the homeless situation in Brattleboro. And everyone I talked to kind of, uh, gets back to the idea that it's really a matter of needing housing. And, uh, when we talked to, uh, Elizabeth Bridgewater about, about that, and she told us about this plan, just thought it was a really good idea. And so we're just here in, in support of it. Um, I just wanted to, to say that we're really, you know, hoping to address the, the larger problem of homelessness in, in Brattleboro, uh, by way of project